Let us call this meeting to order, this meeting of the Penn Valley Municipal Advisory Council, this Thursday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The first order of business being the roll call, Sarah, would you mind doing that? I can go down the list if you'd like. I'll just go down my list. Ryan Everson is present. Rob Tribble.
Sorry, I was unmuted.
It's all right.
Rob, Rob is here, right?
I see, I see Rob there, yes. Teresa Dietrich.
Yes, here.
Is present. Doug Moon.
I'm here.
I see Doug. Rick Noly. We.
Uh, Rick had a doctor appointment or something.
I saw one from him earlier in the week. I did not see a second one indicating any change, so. Nancy Pierce. No Nancy Pierce and Bob Winters.
Hmm, Bob.
No Bob. And with two vacancies with a seven-member council here, we're left with no quorum. So I would ask how to proceed. Sarah, is there? Is there a rule? Should we?
We don't, we don't have a quorum.
I'm on mute.
No, sir.
So to be honest, I actually don't know what the right answer is. I do know that we're not voting on anything tonight or necessarily preparing any, you know, recommendations for Supervisor Hook tonight. So um, I would think that we could do kind of still an informational meeting, but I'm.
Sorry, Sarah, what happened? I'm late. You don't have a quorum?
We do not.
Correct.
Yeah, so there's no action items, so that we're good to go. Matt's on and so let's go. Yeah, we can go along with our presentation.
Thank you, Supervisor.
If that works.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, yes, perfect. Okay, then, moving on. This brings us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, you know, I meant to ask, is, are, when you guys are looking at the flag on my screen, the stars are on your left, right? Correct, I should say. Okay. I didn't realize that this tricky little camera here flips that image and you gotta click a button to make it go the other way. I have it hung up in my room, right? But for the last few meetings, we've been looking at it wrong. Well, you have. I haven't.
Hey, Sarah. I'm texting with Bob Winters and he says he doesn't have the Zoom link.
Okay, I'll, I'll email it to him.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, from my point of view, the flag is on your left, but it's on my right.
It is on your right.
Right.
Oh, but the stars, the stars are supposed to be, it's supposed to be hung with the stars on the, on the observer's left. So that was my concern. They've been flipped for the last few weeks. So that brings us to the Pledge of Allegiance. And let's, let's face it, it's hard to do this with any semblance of organization. So let's all just do it in earnest, but not necessarily in unison. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's so much less anxiety inducing when you're not trying to all do it together. Okay. Oh, and I just got a text from Nancy Pierce. She says she's in the meeting on the phone. So am I to understand that Nancy is the four-four-six number?
And Bob is here now. Hi, Bob.
Okay, very good.
I, I know when I'm not wanted.
Okay, that is Nancy. Okay, so Nancy has been, has been here, has indeed been here. That's Nancy on the phone and we have Bob with us now. Perfect. Okay. All right, then moving along. Um, that brings us to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the Penn Valley MAC audience or staff requests a specific item to be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Any item removed will be considered after the motion to approve the consent agenda. Item A being the approval of the meeting agenda for tonight, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Item B being approval of the meeting minutes from March eighteenth two thousand and twenty-one, our last meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve.
We moved. Approved.
And there we are. Okay, item number three is for public comment. This time is set aside for persons wishing to address the Penn Valley MAC on any matter of interest that is not on the agenda. Not on the agenda. Members of the public can provide general comments on items that are of interest to the public and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board or on a particular agenda item via chat through Zoom or by phone during the meeting using the information provided above in this. Action will not be taken at this meeting on citizen comments. The Penn Valley MAC, however, after hearing from interested citizens, may place items on a future agenda, so proper notice may be given to all interested parties. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available to the public through the county's website at mynemadacounty.com. And with that, I will open it up to public comment.
Okay. Gladys Martinez.
I see Gladys.
Yep. My biggest complaint again is I knew nothing of this meeting. I just happened to be nosy enough to find out about it. There was no, nothing on my bulletin board. I received nothing on my, on my cellphone. I didn't even hear from anybody that there was a meeting and I said to Sharon, do you know that there's a meeting tonight? I even text Frank, who always says, hey Gladys, there's a meeting. So how does anybody know we had a meeting tonight?
Hmm, do you want me to speak to that, Ryan?
I, I was gonna say, I mean, it's the third Thursday of the month. Better than that, I can't tell you that, Gladys. Sarah, what input would you have?
Yeah, so these are standing meetings, Gladys. So they're on the third Thursday of every month. The meeting notice gets posted in uh, four different places in Penn Valley. At the True Value Hardware, across the street at the liquor store or something. Um, and then over at the Holiday Market, I guess that's three different places. And then um, there's also a tool on the Nevada County website where you can sign up to get an automatic notification of when the agenda gets posted for this meeting. And so that could serve as a reminder for you um, to let you know that.
There used to be always a notice put up on my bulletin board at the Penn Valley Shopping Center, but lately.
The Penn, is that where the Holiday Market is?
No.
The.
Across from the hardware store.
Uh, yeah, yeah. So there was a meeting notice posted there.
No, not at, not at my shopping center. There always used to be, but there isn't now.
Oh, no, I posted it. Well, I posted the one for the meeting before and then Jeff posted the one for this meeting. We, we. Yeah.
I go out and check it every day. It's not there.
Well, somebody must have taken it down.
Shopping Center next to the grocery store?
Yeah, if you're, okay, so I'm, I don't live in Penn Valley, so I don't know how people refer to things, but I'm talking about the little shopping center that's across from the True Value Hardware. And there's a bulletin board right there, yeah. Yeah, so for the last meeting, I posted the sign there. For this meeting, Jeff posted it there.
Hmm, okay, so we just missed the shopping center then. So I put that fancy thing up for nothing. Okay, no problem.
Well, no, no, let's wait a minute, wait a minute. Sarah, where did you post it? At the shopping center? By the little, by the market?
Yeah.
At the grocery store market?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, then somebody took it down because I am a B about what goes up there and I watch it every day and every night and it was not there.
Okay, well, sorry about that.
Went into the store to find out if it was in the store, that somebody left it in the store for me or something. No, nothing.
Ah.
That's okay.
Well, well, Gladys, um, do you, do you use email? Are you, do you use your computer?
You know what? I, I'm very honest about it. I'm not into all that email stuff and everything. If it wasn't for Sharon, I don't know what I would do. You know, at ninety years old, you, I never had anything to do all that stuff with. It's all brand new to me and I'm learning a lot.
Fair enough.
You know, I just don't know how to get into all of this stuff over here. When I go to Woodside and I do the Zoom, I have to bring these eight, fifteen-year-old kids in there to put me on Zoom.
I hear you.
That's okay.
So Sarah, so Sarah, this is Susan. So maybe what we could do if someone's taking it down from there, because I do know Jeff left my house to go post those, so I know he did it.
I don't know why anyone would take it down, but.
I don't know, but I know he did it. But I wonder if we put it on the inside window of maybe the sheriff's substation or.
I checked that too.
No, I'm just saying maybe we, because then we know if it gets, if it stays there, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll try something.
Okay.
I'll suggest that. Okay, I'll take.
I just think more people should know, that's all.
Yeah, and we could get Sharon, if Sharon wanted to, we could have the email sent that from the county. If you get signed up for that, they'll send.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thanks Sharon. Thanks for always helping Gladys with that, good.
Yeah.
Technology is challenging for all of us.
Yes, not a problem. Yeah.
I appreciate the diligence in, 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 and your interest in making sure that, that people are finding out about this, Gladys. I do appreciate you providing the space.
Such a big mouth. Don't ever tell me a secret because I blab it all out. And I want everybody in town to know what is going on.
Okay, um, is there any other comment from the public on any matters not on tonight's agenda? I've been known to cut people off and move on too quick. All right, we're moving on to item number four. Tonight's agenda was relatively empty until we got an email from one Ms. Teresa Dietrich suggesting um, that we do a bit of an informational presentation regarding the new accessory dwelling unit uh, regulations um, as they pertain to us here in District Four. And with that, I will hand it over to Matt Kelly, Senior Planner from Nevada County. Matt, it's all you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Hook, members of the Penn Valley Municipal Advisory Commission, Matt Kelly, Senior Planner with the Nevada County Planning Department. So Brian Foss, our Planning Director, asked me to put together a presentation for you on our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So if you bear with me just a minute, I'll share my screen and I have a PowerPoint for you. Okay. So can everybody see that? Okay?
Yeah.
See it.
Well, thank you. So this is a presentation about accessory dwelling units and just a little agenda. So we'll kind of cover what is, what an ADU is or an accessory dwelling unit, go over a little bit about ADU standards. Talk about some recent state law and local changes that we have in our ordinance. Talk about a guest house. There are some differences between a guest house and an ADU. A little bit about well and septic standards, a little bit about construction standards. I'm certainly not our building official, so I don't know all of our building code requirements, but I'll, I'll dabble a little bit in them and then open it up for, for questions. So the first is to start is what, what's an ADU? ADU or an accessory dwelling unit is essentially its source of affordable housing. Uh, we use it to count towards our county regional housing needs allocation numbers or arena numbers. Uh, where this is, is this comes from, this is part of our housing element that we um, get from the California State or California State Department of Housing, Housing and Development, H, Housing and Community Development, RCD. Um, and in our general plan, we have a housing element that says how many affordable housing units we need to, to meet or to have within our, within our planning period, uh, which is from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-seven. So we have a seven-year, a seven-year uh, housing element. So uh, one way we are able to do that is with accessory dwelling units and essentially ADUs or accessory dwelling units, they provide a diversified form of housing. Uh, they're affordable to lots of different groups, uh, local workforces, seniors, caregivers, college students, multi-generational type houses, uh, where you have a, you know, parent, grandparent um, that is, you know, generally is being taken care of by, by, uh, by child, um, or something, something like that, adult children, grandchildren. Um, they're very much a valuable component of the county's housing stock. Um, and then they're, they're generally well-designed and integrate well into all existing neighborhoods uh, throughout the county and then also in, certainly in Penn Valley and District Four. So uh, ADU standards, uh, they are, they're located in our zoning code. Um, and they're, they're, uh, they come right out of our zoning code and a lot of it comes from California state law. Uh, ADUs are, they can be conventionally constructed onsite. Uh, they can either be an attached unit or a detached unit. Uh, they can be a manufactured home um, as well, and then they can be, or they can be an area. For example, if you have, you have a shop or garage and you have a space above it, that can be converted to an ADU as well, with, of course, all with appropriate building permits. Uh, some of our standards about ADUs, they, they are limited in size. Uh, and this comes from, comes from state law as well. So attached units, if they're attached to an existing single-family residence, they're allowed a maximum of fifty percent of the existing single-family residence, but no larger or no larger than twelve hundred square feet. Uh, if they're detached, then they're limited to a maximum size of twelve hundred square feet as well. A detached unit can have an attached garage or carport, uh, that can exceed four hundred and eighty square feet. So they can have, uh, you can have your accessory dwelling unit and then a four hundred and eighty square foot attached garage or carport. The only caveat with this um, is that they, they can, they have to share external type circulations. You have to go outside of the ADU and then be able to go into the garage. Uh, if you have a larger garage, if you have a four hundred and eighty square foot garage, then they can share internal circulation. You just have to show that on the, on the floor plan. Um, ADU standards, so typically there's no more than, no more than one per parcel. A little caveat to this is a new requirement. It's called a junior ADU. Um, you can have a junior ADU and an accessory and an ADU that's detached on your property based on, on the requirements of, of California state law. The difference is, is that junior ADU is limited to five hundred square feet and it has to share internally or internal circulation with the main dwelling. Uh, and then a detached ADU uh, can be, you know, meets the requirements of, of twelve hundred square feet and has to meet setbacks and things like that. Um, be, there are requirements for, for fire code as well, uh, beyond dead-end road limits. Uh, which are, which are in our code, ADU has to provide or the driveway has to meet appropriate frontage, uh, and then there has to be a turnout every eight hundred feet. Uh, and then they have to have a fire protection plan that gets reviewed by our Cal Fire Fire Planner, uh, as well as the, in this case, would be the Penn Valley Fire Department, and um, they would also review that as well. Uh, an ADU can have a covered deck and entryway, can't exert, cannot exceed a ten-foot depth. Uh, and then enclosed decks or porches on an ADU are allowed as well. Uh, they cannot exceed fifty percent of total, the gross, total gross floor area of the ADU and they can't be habitable space. So if you have a, for example, if you have a traditional frame accessory dwelling unit, you can have a enclosed deck or porch. Uh, it has, it can't share internal circulation and it can't be, uh, so you have to be able, you can go from one door to the next. Um, and then you can have that porch enclosed, but it can't be habitable type living space, meaning it can't be conditioned uh, or designed for, for human habitation. Uh, some recent changes uh, in our accessory dwelling unit uh, ordinance is that generally uh, ADUs are restricted uh, for the use of short-term rentals. There are some exceptions. Uh, some of that is it has to be within the sphere of influence of City Grass Valley, City of Nevada City or the Town of Truckee. Uh, and then there are, there are, uh, within the Town of Truckee, there are also some other, other limitations as well. Um, the, we, we removed the existing owner occupancy requirements, so meaning that the ADU or the uh, the main residence can be rented. Uh, they're not allowed to be rented for short term. Uh, with that, there has to be a deed restriction that gets recorded with the ADU um, that will, that gets, that says that the, the unit cannot be rented as a short-term rental. It has to be for a long-term rental. Um, there, there is, there, provision for short-term rentals within the town sphere of, of the Town of Truckee. Uh, and there's some limitations there as well. Um, the, we also clarified the septic disposal requirements for an ADU and I'll, I'll get into that here in just a minute. Uh, and then revised uh, the road and sewer mitigation fee deferral for certain circumstances. One of the way that we can meet our um, housing arena, arena numbers is there are requirements to allow for deferred uh, deferred fees for an ADU. Uh, they have to be deed restricted to serve low and very low income uh, requirements, and then there are ways to be able to defer some of the fees uh, until the final of the building permit. Um, and then um, we also, some recent changes allow ADUs on properties with, for established resource-based employee housing. So if you have an agriculture operation and you want to build an ADU to house employees, that's allowed as well. Um, so the differences for between an ADU and a guest house, a guest house is it's a residential structure and tied, intended primarily for sleeping purposes for a member of the, of family occupying the primary residence as, and as a non-paying guest. The ADU, of course, can have a kitchen in it, can have a, uh, you know, full bathroom, full kitchen, it can have all those facilities. The guest house cannot. Um, guest houses are limited to a maximum size of five hundred square feet. Um, there is a provision in code that does allow for that to be increased with a use permit. Uh, can't have a kitchen. Plumbing is limited to a single bedroom and one wet bar, which is defined as a single sink and faucet. Uh, and then all utilities of the guest house are dependent on the primary residence. Um, so to talk a little bit about well and septic standards, Environmental Health Department uh, assesses uh, and, and permits wells and septics for, for ADUs. Um, existing septic systems, it's important to know that the capacity of the tank and disposal field, the leach field uh, has to be able to support the ADU. Uh, additional information regarding soils analysis and, and evaluation of, of soils uh, through soil testing is part of the, would be part of the application process. Uh, and you, and our Environmental Health Department would be able to answer additional questions on, on that. Um, and then the uh, wells, do you have to have, you have to have a current yield test as well for, for the, for a well to be able to show sufficient water requirements and it has to be, um, Environmental Health has specific requirements on that as far as gallons per minute uh, with the service connections look like, but to be able to support an ADU and a primary residence. And then some additional environmental health standards. Environmental Health does recommend that the ADU be served by a separate septic tank. Uh, it can share its own, they can share the, the same leach field uh, provided that the leach field can adequately support the ADU. Um, but Environmental Health does recommend that the septic tank be separate. Uh, and that's also in, in code as well. Uh, and then the additional ADU septic tank uh, needs to, to flow to the main residential drain field. As I was saying, but there is contingent where the existing disposal field can handle the additional flow from a second tank. So that's where if, if it can't, um, then it can have its own, then you have to have its own, its own leach field. Uh, well, testing uh, needs to be done to make sure the water supply is sufficient. It's recommended that it's three gallons per minute uh, service connection for the ADU. Uh, and then if testing shows a flow as less than three gallons per minute, uh, it's possible that a watered storage tank may be required to be able to meet that. Um, and then a little bit about construction standards. So ADUs do have to meet uh, current two thousand and nineteen California building code requirements. Uh, there are a few exceptions to that where if it's a, uh, one of the exceptions is fire sprinklers. If the existing residence does not require fire sprinklers um, or if it doesn't have them, or if the ADU is proposed to be a manufactured home, uh, then there's not necessarily the provision for, for fire standard or for fire sprinklers. Um, and the second is about uh, solar panels. There are requirements for, for solar panels, um, and but on, on an ADU, uh, those provisions can be, can be waived. Um, there is, in that if it's a manufactured home, then of course the, the, you can, the ADU doesn't have to have solar panels because there's not a way to be able to do that. You can, however, do, if you want to have solar panels, um, you can do a, basically like a freestanding, either a uh, detached or freestanding solar, you know, solar array, or put them on top of the, the manufactured home uh, with a carport or something like that to be able to support them. Um, and then the other is that uh, ADUs in the high and very high fire, fire hazards, very areas uh, do you have to have a fire protection plan? So what that is, is that generally gets put together by the, by the customer. Um, and then that gets reviewed by our building department and then also our fire marshal. Um, and he can help put those together if the, if the customer or the applicant asks questions about that. Scott Ekman is our deputy fire marshal. Uh, and he also works very closely with, with the Penn Valley Fire Department in reviewing plans and things for accessory dwelling units. Um, so with that, that concludes my presentation and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, this is Teresa. Um, did you say that the ADU unit has, has to have solar?
Um, so no, so if it's a manufactured home, uh, doesn't necessarily require solar. Uh, if it's a detached or, you know, traditionally built ADU, uh, then I would defer to our building department to see if it needs solar.
Okay, thank you.
Is it, can you hear me? Uh, I think I'm not muted. Can anybody hear me?
We can hear you, Bob.
Okay. So if it's an existing facility, what's the cost to get it approved?
So you're talking about an existing accessory dwelling unit that was.
Yeah. Right. What, what is this whole process cost?
So uh, this is kind of a permit fee estimate that I, that I have that we, we have in one of our, in one of our handouts. We have a lot of good information, good handouts on our website too, uh, under our building department, but uh, for example, for a twelve hundred square foot uh, ADU, uh, the total permit cost is about fourteen thousand dollars. Um, and then for a uh, seven hundred and fifty square foot ADU or less, permit costs are about eight thousand dollars. Uh, and then for a five hundred square foot unit or less, permit costs are about five thousand dollars.
I'd like to ask a question. Uh, do you have a pre-approved design that would minimize the time that it takes and the money that it takes? In other words, you know, if you had a two or three or four design plans that were already reviewed and ready to go and all you did is build it, why would it cost that much to get something approved again?
So uh, we are actually working on that. Uh, the building department and the planning department is uh, right now, we're soliciting bids for architects to, in, on RFP uh, for architects to design that and is one way to be able to reduce construction costs for ADUs. Um, that's actually a program in our housing element that was identified as a need. Um, so we are, we are doing that and uh, the, the goal is to have some standard designs and standard, standard construction drawings that were already pre-approved um, and be able to use those to help reduce uh, permit costs and reduce construction costs.
All right. I guess I can understand how you could charge more money because of placement on the particular parcel. But you know, if you've already pre-approved everything from the ground up in terms of a building plan and, and you followed that building plan, I don't know, building plan one oh one, um, why would it cost anything more?
Well, there's the, there's permit, there's the permit costs, so there's the permit cost to be able to process the building permit as well as to, to take it in, to do the plan reviews on it. Uh, there's the staff time that's for that, that gets built into it as well, the, as well as the inspection fees. Uh, inspection costs as well, it gets built into.
Yeah, okay, so you go through, I follow standard plan one oh one and I have, I don't know, four, five, six, you know, building inspectors through the steps come out and check you out, make sure you did what, what the plan originally was. I got that part. And I think, of course, yeah, based on the location on the parcel, you might have setback requirements and all that kind of stuff. And then, of course, it sounds like, you know, of course, you have to have some approval of a septic plan and a water plan. But if you can demonstrate that you've got three gallons per minute and you can demonstrate that you're attaching to an existing septic system, why would it cost so much?
So that, I mean, beyond that, you'd probably want to, you do want to talk to our building department on, on that. Um, I mean, the permit fees and those fees are, are based on our fee schedule, uh, which does get approved by the, by the Board of Supervisors as well. Um, so I mean, those are, and it's also based on uh, the overall valuation of building, uh, which comes out and then there's fees that are built into that that come from building code as well. So that's that's also where our our fees come from. Beyond that, certainly wanna, I mean, I would, I would probably defer to Craig Reese Bach, our our building official. For additional questions on on additional costs and and kind of where they are, what they are.
Well, it would just, you know, I'm gonna throw this out there, it just seems to me with. The shortage of affordable housing and all that kind of stuff, you keep on hearing about it all the time. At least since I've been here, which hasn't been that long, but you know, long enough. Is you try and make it easy. For somebody that owns a property to build an A D U. That that, you know. Would help out, I mean, you know, you got kids, you got grandkids, you got relatives, et cetera, et cetera. It just seems to make sense to me that that the county would want to promote, if you would. The ease of construction for something like that. And I I would make it, I would suggest that it's an objective. For the county, that's all, it's just, you know. And it's one of the big issues that I see all the time on social media and everything else around here is. You know, number of affordable houses, and of course, jobs. And and to me, there's a third part of that, which is education. But, you know, those those things. Somehow or another, you just gotta make it easier for people to get the job done, that's all.
So Rob, I don't know if you caught that from Matt, though, but they are working on that, that's the idea of plan of having some pre approved plans.
Yeah, that's good.
So that is, it's in the process, it's not completed, and that's why we really can't report on it, because that's what's happening. And actually, that's not going to be just for affordable housing, they're even looking at having. Plans that are available for three type, three sizes of the houses, so. That that's that is in progress and you're probably gonna see some of that happen. I would say probably by next year at the latest, so it is happening, they are working on it, so.
Good, I I think that's really great, I mean. You know, I'm all for it in the sense that it seems to be a big need of our, you know, people who live here and. You know, I'm constantly seeing, you know, Facebook and everything else, social stuff about it. And and, you know, my own experience is is, oh, about two weeks ago. I I got a notice from, what is it, one of those real estate valuation sites. And they tell me that housing in in this county. My house went up fourteen percent in one year, which is incredible. You know, and I'm just thinking, I sure hope. I don't know what that means for other people, I mean, obviously, I bought mine a long time ago, but. You know, you gotta buy into that market and it's like a a train that leads the station and you're never gonna catch up with it.
So let me, let me jump in, Rob, and and piggyback sort of on on. Rob's, Rob's question and the way it was directed, Matt, can I ask you? I know that there's, you can't hardly throw a rock in this county without hitting an unpermitted structure, an unpermitted, well, say an unpermitted A D U. Are there any ways to incentivize people to bring their unpermitted? A D U's up to code if they're not, or just to get them signed off if they never were finaled or. Whatever the case may be, I mean, I'm not talking about anything that's ramshackle, but these perfectly livable structures, I just, I I just bought this house, but I, for seven years, I lived. An unpermitted granny unit that. It shouldn't be permitted, but it just wasn't out of the guy's laziness, I think, but. Is there any way to incentivize people to sort of get these on the books?
No, that's that's a very good question, I I'm not a hundred percent sure on on that, I mean, there's not. There's not a fee program or things that I'm aware of right now, but that's certainly something that. You know, I could talk with with Craig Reese Bach, our building official and and. Also our code enforcement department too, I mean, we don't, you know, we don't. We don't go out looking for, you know, for unpermitted structures or things like that, I mean. You know, so it's complaint driven through through code enforcement. But yeah, no, I I think that's a very good question, I can certainly look into that and and I can follow up with you on on that too.
That'd be great. I think that there's a, it all sort of tie it ties in with with. With Rob's idea of. Just bringing, making making it easier, more making the accessibility easier and I think. I think there's probably a lot of places out there where if people found out that they could have their place permitted without without having to lose an arm and a leg over it. They just might do so.
Yeah, I sort of, I sort of very much agree with Ryan, I mean, I know that there is all sorts of unpermitted stuff, I drive by it every day. If we could sort of set up a program to get them, you know, in compliance with sort of a minimum amount of. Hassle, you might get a better product in the long run. And and maybe a safer product in the long run. And and you'd have more of an idea of what's going on out there, I mean, I. You know, like Ryan said, I I it's it's hard not to throw a rock and hit one around here, I mean, it really is. And you see it all the time, you know. It's not that I know exactly what the status is of every single structure. But when they look that way and they sort of, you know, you wonder and. Seems to me, if you wanted more compliance. You gotta make it easier to comply and and cheaper to comply, I mean, you know. I'm I'm sure a lot of people are just saying, I don't want to go through that trouble because I'm gonna have to spend. Fourteen grand or something to get something, you know, approved. And and, you know, it's like Ryan was saying, something he lived someplace for seven years. I'm sure there's places around here that have been lived in for longer than that, that aren't in compliance.
So I'm I'm just gonna throw this out. Oh, you probably know this, true Teresa, but there is an avenue to to have your house. Permitted through an as built process. And so the other thing that would be very important is it is in doing that is having. The the information of when it was built. If you had an engineer that worked on it or contractors, that you have all those things in place, so there is a way. To do that and they do work with you on that over and give you a period of time to do that. So again, you have to remember, the county goes by what a state standard requires. That that's that's the biggest challenge, it's not just necessarily what the county wants to see, they have to be to state standard. But the nice thing about an as built, and we're seeing this happen all the time, spending right now in our cannabis industry, a lot of those guys had stuff that was. Not permitted, and so they are going back through that process and. So let's say you built a place in nineteen eighty nine. And you can prove that that's when you built it, okay, you can prove that you have. A a list of items that you purchased, they will go back to the nineteen eighty nine building code. And that's what the standard is set at. So there there is, there is options for people to come and do that, whether it's all the way cheap, probably not. I mean, I'm not saying it's. But like when people are selling homes, we're seeing a lot of that too, people buy a house and some of the. Parts of the buildings are, and Teresa, maybe you go ahead and talk to that, but I'm just telling you, there is. Rob, and there isn't a cost to it, but it if you. People keep good records, which you should, of when you built your house, I had one just happened the other day. They had all the paperwork from when they bought the house. They didn't do it, but they had the paperwork and then then we had a trail to work from and the county is really. Willing to work through those processes.
I'm finding it that way as well, Sue. And the reason why I wanted this to be on the agenda is I just think that the public needs to have more awareness. To this streamlined process that we have now developed at the building department. So that hopefully the public will be more inclined to start using the permit process and not going. Without the permit, because it really, really makes it hard. For the next guy, when it's not disclosed and it creates problems. And so if people just understood that there's a good handout, there's a whole package. You know, in my mind, the permitting for this is really pretty reasonable when you consider the staff time and the fire department and. Have, you know, all these other things. It's taken a long time for Nevada County to figure out just the septic component of this package. And here it is, now it's now it's here and I just would like to see. More people be aware of it and raise the awareness in the general public, so that was why I asked. Sarah to bring Matt here tonight.
Matt, can I ask one more question? You could clarify, because it's kind of an interesting thing about why. Tiny homes and mobile homes don't fit into this package.
So for for a tiny home, they they have to meet building code. And I mean, they they have to meet provisions of of California building code and and meet setbacks. There there, we do have the provision for, you know, now for a junior A D U, which can be built. Within the existing single family residence or an existing habitable structure. So we do have that as well, but for for a tiny home. You know, they have to be appropriate building code and and there are. I think there are some provisions in building code for minimum sized rooms and minimum sized walls and things as well. And so we but the, we have had folks do what would be considered a tiny home A D U. Something that is is seven hundred square feet or less. One of the the, you know, one of the the provisions, and actually, I I'm. I know this because I'm looking at doing A D U on my property now. Is if it's, it's typically if it's about seven hundred square feet or less, there is ways to waive some of the road impact fees. So there there's incentives there for for a smaller, a smaller A D U or a smaller tiny home. To be an E D U for for road impact fees and and things like that.
Is that based on the smaller occupancy possibility because of the size?
I believe so.
What's the definition of as built?
So the definition of as built is a structure that was was not built with the benefit of a permit. That would have required one at the time it was constructed.
So in other words, Bob, they're they're basically, you you draw exactly where it is and lay it all out. As it sits today.
Care Everston, it looks like Cheyenne has a question or comment.
Yeah, I, Cheyenne, please.
Hi, Mister Matt, um, so I live in Lake Wildwood and we are, our H O A. We are allowed to have an A D U, but no kitchen. So I guess that falls under a guest house, right, for the purpose of a guest house. So if we want to change that, is that something our community has to take on? With our H O A, if we want to have an accessory dwelling unit with a kitchen? Because I've seen it where they install it. It gets inspected, then they install the kitchen and all that other stuff after the fact, so. I really want to have that in our, inside the gate, but. With H O A, it's it's hard to change those rules, so. I don't know, is there something that the county can incentivize our association to promote this or change this?
So that's that's a very good question.
And I don't know what Lake of the Pines has, I just know. With us, it's, you know, it's just nice to have a granny unit so I can have my mother in law. Or a teenager that's just starting out on their own, you know, it would be nice to have that income. But they're so strict here in Lake Wildwood, I I don't know what to do, but I I'd like to have some feedback or.
Sure, so that that's a, that is a very, very good question, so we do not. We don't enforce like Wildwood C C and Rs. So that is is, I mean, I know that there's C C and Rs or the conditions. Conditions, what is it, conditions, restrictions and covenants. Do you know, don't allow for for an A D U. And you know, we don't enforce that, that is is something that is is a civil issue between the property owner. And the the homeowners association, so if somebody in in Lake Wildwood within inside the gate wanted to apply for an A D U. Our code allows for that within the R one zoning district. Now, that is, I know a discrepancy between the H O A and and we've we've had discussions with them in the past, I I believe. But that is something that, you know, we don't enforce their their C C and Rs.
Um, do you guys talk to our E M O once we apply for for a permit? Because technically, we're supposed to contact our environmental maintenance office, you know, if we just cut down a tree.
Right.
So we'd go by there and then we apply for the permit, but what if they apply for a permit? Does the county contact Lake Wildwood or how does that work?
So we we don't typically, I mean, we have for for. You know, for new new construction and things, gotten gotten letters from from the, I think it's at the environmental management agency. We've gotten letters from them, you know, approving the the project and we certainly don't, you know, we want to maintain a good relationship with them. But you know, we don't enforce their C C and Rs and and things. You know, if you have a, you know, a new connection for a road or something like that, we will, we will ask for. You know, for a letter or or recommendations from from them, but. You know, beyond that, I I I would probably defer to our building department to see if they. Contact them and we enforce what's in our zoning code. There are the provisions for for the setbacks to the lake, for example. And, you know, I had a building permit for a deck that was, you know, the the E M A wanted to. Allow it to be closer to the water line than what our code allows for. They approved it and unfortunately I had to say, you know, I said, I had to say no, I mean, we we couldn't do that, so that is kind of a little discrepancy, but. Yeah, there there are instances where we will. You know, we'll see letters of approval from them. But, you know, beyond that, I think it's it's kind of up to the property owner to communicate with the with the homeowner association.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Yeah, we do the same for Lake of the Pines as well, and then also for the Pulata homeowners association in Sarasbrass.
Okay, great, yeah, a lot of times, you know, E M O just verifies and calls that there's work getting done, so. It's been great, thank you, Matt.
Welcome.
So what is the sequence of precedent on an approval?
Sequence of precedents for.
Approving something, so, I mean, state, county, homeowners association. Is that sort of the sequence, the hierarchy?
So, I mean, the the process is is that, you know, the applicant would submit a building permit for for an accessory dwelling unit. That gets submitted to our building department and then. It gets routed to the the permit process, it gets routed to our building department, it's routed from our building department. To planning, environmental health and public works, we all review it and then we have it, we have deadlines that we have. That are set by our building department to review the permit. And then if we have any corrections or anything, we upload those our comments into our permit software called the seller. And then once the permit is ready to issue, either through the contractor or through the homeowner, we then issue the issue the permit. We do, we do all of our, we typically do the reviews all in house, there are some instances where. Our building department will def- will defer the the review to, you know, outside. An outside review, you. Basically, like an outside review contractor that we contract with to to do that, but typically for residences and things, we we don't do that, we do that for commercial projects and things. But then as far as state permitting or or any kind of federal permitting, if we're working on for like a management plan, for example. Sometimes we'll have an A D U, this is for talking about A D U's. We do have provisions in code for setbacks to perennial streams and creeks, for example. We have provisions code for for setbacks to to within areas of thirty percent slope. So if we have a setback to, if we work, and those can be reduced with with a management plan. One of the that sometimes we'll see if we have a setback to. To read, if we have an A D U or or a structure that's going to be closer to a perennial stream than what code allows for. Will condition it that there'll be additional permitting from the state, either regional water quality control board, state department of. California Department of Fish and Wildlife, they have some permitting and things, if if there's going to be. A stream bed crossing, a bridge, a culvert within a. A stream or something like that, so there there could be additional state permitting that's needed, but it's, if it's just, if it meets setbacks. Meets code and and everything, then then the permit can be issued just by the county.
Wow.
Care Everston, it looks like Sharon has a question and then Tim.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to unmute, so I was, I was going. Who was I going to then, sorry, Sarah, I was gonna go to Mark, but did you see somebody else?
A while back, Sharon.
Oh, I did see him there, okay, great, yeah, so let's.
Okay, I have a question. I have a question. If you're gonna put a ADU and you're going to use a manufactured home on the property, are you going to have to meet the the HCD codes and standards or is it going to be the counties? Because like I know HCD requires like on the skirting, you can't use two one eleven siding no more. You can't use the vinyl siding no more. Has to be something like hardy board, something more fire resistant. Is a county also going to require that?
So I'm not our our building official, so I would defer some of that to to Craig Greasbach, our our building official. But from what I understand, I mean, manufactured homes are, you know, they're they're manufactured to California building code. They would meet fire requirements and and everything, and then we then permit the actual placement of the manufactured home on the property. There are fire clearance requirements and there's WUI standards, which is the wildland urban interface standards. Beyond that, for skirting and things, I would I would defer to to our building department on the specific criteria, whether it has to be hardy board, two one eleven vinyl siding and and those types of things.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. Yeah. Mark Smith there. Under the guest house standards, you said that it's limited to eight hundred square feet with a wet bar. Did I miss the part where the back there's no bathroom or?
So for for a guest house, it's limited to a maximum of five hundred square feet. It can be increased with a with a use permit that would get approved by the by the zoning administrator. There's no kitchen that's allowed, but it can have a wet bar. And then, of course, it can have a bedroom, bathroom, and then a wet bar, which is defined as a sink and faucet.
Okay, but no shower bathtub, just standard washroom.
Oh, no, it can have a full bathroom in it.
Full bath, okay.
Okay, are there any other questions for Matt?
I I guess the only thing I I would ask is on larger parcels, why you couldn't have more than one ADU?
So you can, our code just limits it to one and I and we would have to, that would be something I think we'd have to look at state law to see if it would allow for for multiple. It does also have requirement, there are density requirements as well. So an EDU is is a way to be able to help meet some of the density requirements, but I'd have to look at state law and then I think we'd have to also look to to your board of supervisors to see if that's something that they would like to explore, to allow additional. We do, state law does allow for the junior ADU and a detached ADU, so you can have can have the two. That's not in our code, but we follow state law. So that is is one way to be able to have a second one. And then beyond that, it would be, it would be considered a dwelling group. There are ways to be able to have multiple dwelling group on your property, but it requires a use permit. And then the zoning would have to allow for that, too.
So did I just understand, say, you could have both the an attached and a detached AU ADU in the same parcel?
So you can have what's called a junior ADU. And the requirements for a junior ADU is that it has to be created within the walls of the existing or proposed single family dwell, a single family residence or conversion of existing habitable space. The junior ADU can be no larger than five hundred square feet. It may share a central system, you know, the the share, it can share the central systems, meaning the central HVAC and and electrical and plumbing and that. Contains a basic kitchen with a small plug in appliances and can share a bathroom within the primary dwelling. And then you can have one ADU or one ADU, which is detached or attached, and then per parcel as well as a junior AD.
And the junior ADU, if I'm not mistaken, Matt, is often like an apartment above the garage. That would comply.
It would, yeah. That's a lot of the times what what we see. Or, yeah, it generally an apartment above the garage and then you'll have a detached ADU out beyond that. Now, our there are provisions in code as well for for maximum density, not density, for maximum impervious surface on a parcel as well. So when we get into get into multiple, you know, a detached ADU. And then if we have a garage that has the apartment above it that has a junior ADU, we have to make sure that there's that we don't exceed the the maximum impervious surface that the zoning code allows for.
So earlier, there was some reference to whether or not short term rentals, long term rentals. What's the definition about that? What what constitutes long term versus short term?
So a long term rental is is something generally for a year. I mean, there there's a lease and it's generally a longer, a longer period. A short term rental is for is like an Airbnb or VRBO. It's it's designed as a nightly rental where and so that that's the the provisions.
Okay. So then, so an ADU can be rented for a year, but can't be rented overnight. Is that what we're saying?
Right.
Okay.
That's because, Rob, the purpose of ADUs in our in our housing element is to develop affordable housing for full time occupancy so that more people can have full time occupancy. So that's why, that's why it's that way.
So I I I'm just. You know, it seems to me, you know, we need to make sure that we have a a good, proper definition so people can understand it, to live within it. So an Airbnb kind of thing, whatever it might be, a night, a week or whatever, isn't allowed and then the ADU can be used for somebody that's renting it for a year. I don't know. Yeah.
Well, part of that, too, is because the the community has had so much problems with short term rentals, people coming into our communities and having big parties and clogging up the parking and clogging up the streets. And so it's just been a constant issue. So I'm wondering, Matt. I I'm wondering if you're aware of the Nevada City Cottage Ordinance that's going to be coming to the Nevada City Planning Department soon? And if something like if that passes in Nevada City, do you see that as being something that maybe our county would look at in other communities or other areas of the community?
I'm not completely aware of it. I've I've heard bits and pieces about it, but I'm not not fully aware of it. It's it's possible. I mean, one of the, you know, one of the the things that Nevada City, City of Nevada City or City of Grass Valley or Town of Truckee has public sewer in smaller lots. And so whereas the county has says doesn't generally have public sewer, I mean, we certainly have areas like Pin Valley that does. But that that's something that we certainly would have to look at with with, you know, areas of public sewer and to have something similar to that. But it's possible. I mean, if that's something that that the supervisors would like to to look at and explore, that's something we could we certainly could do.
All right. Anybody else have anything for Matt?
I think it's gonna get.
Just to thank you.
Yeah, this is very, very informational. Matt, thank you very much for your time. Thanks for the effort. This is a for for coming about as quick as it did. I I was quite informed. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay, and I guess with that, we will move on to item number five, which will bring us to our subcommittee updates. And actually, I think I'll just throw it to Sarah. We'll hear from her. Sarah, have at it.
Yeah, so um the two subcommittees, the marketing subcommittee and the broadband subcommittee unfortunately did not meet between the last meeting and the current today's meeting, which is primarily my fault. I've been completely underwater on a big project at work. But I have already scheduled the next marketing subcommittee meeting. And within the next day or two, we'll do so with the broadband subcommittee as well. But the reason I put it on the agenda was because I wanted to give you all a chance to let me know if there's anything that you desperately want me to put on the agendas for those subcommittee meetings so I can tee them up properly.
So the marketing subcommittee, we're just meeting with really with the union for the next meeting correctly, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's going to be a really good discussion with them for the TWI and the and the and the regular union.
Yeah, great. Okay. And I texted Mike Dobbins and he will definitely be taking part in it. So I think it'll be, yeah, it'll be a great meeting.
Rob, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I think from a broadband point of view, there's sort of two directions that I've been looking at. On a national level, it looks like, you know, we're going to have some legislation or whatever and 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 grants and money and whatever available for broadband. It'd certainly be you know, one of those things in the conversation. And I would like to make sure that we do everything we can within the county and state level to be prepared that when this money does become available, that we can make a fairly efficient and quick use of it. Now, I don't know what that means exactly within sort of the, you know, the workings of the county. But I I would only thing I can think of is back to some of the short term things we talked about, which is maybe some sort of internal effort on the part of the county to set up some sort of website where people can register and talk about broadband and they want broadband and sort of a a survey thing. So when this money does come available, that the various vendors will have a source of information so they can make business decisions as quickly as possible. And and again, I don't know exactly what all of those kinds of things might be, but it seems to me that within within the county that somebody on a on a sort of a staff kind of basis can help set up that survey and then maybe promote people awareness of that survey so that when we actually have something come available, that the vendors know about it and and they can use that information in making a decision. That's that's, that's about the only thing I've been watching. Now, I think I said to you, Sarah, earlier today, there's going to be some big thing about basically that kind of information, but it's it's a very preliminary kinds of conversations. That's all. That's what I've been paying attention to more than anything. And and then at the local level, I mean, I think the the thing I would love to see is is some sort of hybrid solution for getting the best possible solution to each individual in the county, which, you know, might be a different solution for each one of them. You know, it might be wired, it might be broadband over optic cable, it might be broadband over over wireless or from satellite or something, but you know, try and have all those options available to as many people as possible.
Oh, so, Rob, yeah, these are all great comments. And I just I just took some notes on what you're saying. And so those are, these are things that we can agendize for that next meeting. I will let you know that the broadband working group is just about to wrap up. It it has just selected its awardees for this most recent last mile grant. And that will be presented at the April twenty seventh board meeting. And we do see money coming down the pipe for broadband, both in the American Rescue Plan Act. And then I was gonna say something else, but but so, well, and there are two pots of funding within the American Rescue Plan Act, so we are watching that and preparing for that. And so, yeah, we, yeah, we have our eye on that.
I think that's great. I mean, you just got to be ready for it, ready to execute, pull the trigger when the stuff shows up.
Yeah, definitely. And we're working with the Sierra Business Council on that, too, and they're an excellent resource and knowledge base. So we have a really good partner on that.
I have a comment if I if I may. I I'm trying to do some research in what's available now instead of waiting for the feds to bless us with all of their billions, which will take forever. And so I have talked to Smarter Broadband, which is a local company. And they are, they are eager to do what they can for my neighborhood because their system is line of sight only. And so the hills and valleys that we have are a major problem for them. And they tell me that the county does not like towers. Antennas, I guess, that are above the tree. If if we had a series of antennas above the tree tops, it would make broadband available to everybody. But we don't have that and apparent and and I guess that's probably not realistically possible. So anyway, Smarter Broadband is doing some research. Talking to a neighbor up high on the hill near me or a few miles from me to see about the possibility of putting an antenna up there or a, yeah, an antenna. Not a tower, but an antenna. And that would make broadband available for probably fifteen or twenty people in my valley area. I'm also aware of an individual in Grass Valley that has a nonprofit corporation that provides smarter broad or not smart, that provides broadband service. I think they tap into one of the fiber optic cables and and I I know very little about it. I've emailed the guy. I've asked for a meeting, which he seems willing to do. So hopefully by next week, I'll know more about that possibility. All right, next month, I should say.
Great, Bob. So, yeah, let's let's discuss that further in the subcommittee meeting, just since we didn't really agenda the big discussion about that in this meeting, and I want to be respectful of everybody's time. But thank you. Thank you. I've learned that.
So can I just say something, Matt? I don't want to throw you on on to the thing, but can you just do a, can you say a little bit about the towers? I mean, you do have to have a a permit. There's a permitting process for the towers. It's not that the county, we do have towers. Could you, could you, I know you don't have that right handy, but could you do that? Could you give us a little overview how that tower situation works?
Sure. Yeah, so for a cell, I mean, it typically is a wireless telecommunication tower or a cell tower. We have provisions in in our code about about cell towers. They require a use permit for for a new a new cell tower. Generally, they're put up by the the wireless carriers, so Verizon, T-Mobile, ATT. They are also put up by by private tower owners like American Tower. American Tower will then lease space to one of the one of the wireless carriers. They are just, they are discretionary process. So for the for a use permit, it does go through, it goes to the discretionary review process, goes to our zoning administrator. And then from there, there is the the project can be appealed to the board of supervisors, which does does happen upon occasion. Where there's some pretty strict federal requirements as far as what a jurisdiction can and can't, you know, ask for. One of the biggest things that in our code talks about is is a tower being silhouetted against the sky or on a ridge line. And that is something that that, you know, our code does does talk about. We do have provisions in code for for a mono for stealth tower. So typically, those are like a monopoint. And and so we do have provisions in code for that. Aesthetics is kind of one of the one of the things that we'll we'll look at as well for for a tower. And then we we also encourage in our code encourages co-location. So when you have a an existing tower and you have one of the wireless carriers or even even a, you know, broadband wireless internet provider to co-locate on an existing tower, they then, and so our code does does talk about that, too. And then all towers do require building permit, which which is part of the the conditions of approval for for the use permit process. And then there are some design standards as well about is lighting, you know, towers can't be lit unless the FAA requires that they have a like a red blinking light on top for for air traffic. And then we also have signage requirements. There, there's specific signage that has to go on them, but you know, they can't advertise, you know, Burger King or something like that. So, and then. The other is that there's setback requirements too for, for a tower. If it's next to a residential zoning district, the tower has to be set back a hundred percent of the tower height. And then if not, then it can be as long as we have a geotechnical report. That, you know, and we generally get those by, by most of all, all of the. People who submit building permits for and use permits for towers. That says that it can be closer, then there's some provisions in our code that allow for that too.
Stuck on mute again. Sorry about that. Thank you very much, Matt. And thank you, Sarah. Okay, so, um, moving on from that, I guess. We're moving to item number six, which is an update from our very own supervisor hook. Oh, and you're muted now.
I don't have anything real update. I really love that Matt came down and gave us this information. I think we all have. There's so many things going on at the county. I think some of the fun stuff to look forward to is updating our website. Sarah, I just had, we had a meeting. I mean, it's not happening today, but we're going to see that in the near future. That makes it a lot more easy to maneuver around. Just like we're talking, somebody saying, you know, Matt saying you go on, you can find these planning documents. So someday we're going to make that really special because we do believe that the community deserves that. That's. So we've got that going on. I think that's exciting. That's new. It's not going to be tomorrow, but it's something to look forward to. I'm just trying, there's a lot going on. Of course, you know, with COVID, things are starting to open up a little bit. That's been great. Vaccines are becoming more available. Our clinic is open and so is public health. They're doing an excellent job rolling out vaccinations. So if you haven't had it and you're interested and you want it. That is an option and you probably know a lot of that already. They did open it up now for sixteen year old and up, but if you are under eighteen, you do have to have a parent with you to sign. You know, because you're not adult, so that's going on. The county, we're working, I've been, I'm learning a whole new life of the county through budgets. Been very interesting process. I'm on the budget subcommittee and I think I do that from morning till night. Last few weeks. And I got to tell you, I've actually really enjoyed it. I thought I was going to step into that and want to pull my hair out and. It makes me even more impressed with. Our staff and departments that we work with when you look at the dollars I have to work with and what they're accomplishing, so. And what we did through COVID and, and stayed solvent. So I'm ever impressed with. Our county, I think sometimes from the outside looking in, we have all, it's so easy to complain about all of it. But when you're on the inside and you really get to see it start to move and what's happening inside there. You have people that really are there working for this community and so I'm, I'm kind of. I'm still a cheerleader for them. I used to be on the outside and complain a lot and now that I work with them and see what they do. I think that everybody needs to know that those, the transparency is there. You just have to come and ask the questions and if you don't get the ones you want. Or you need, there's still a spot and you know, you can always call me. My phone's open. I might not know the answer, but I'll get to the bottom of it, whatever we need. So I'm having fun with that. We have welcomed Sarah in as a new analyst full time at the, at the supervisor's office and we love having her there. We just worked on a huge project and. That's probably why we didn't get some of this stuff done. We had some big deadlines that we tried to meet because we're looking for some funding. That might come from the federal government to do some really big projects here that could benefit a lot of our rural community. And so lots of fun stuff like that going on. It's all good and just still working and you guys all know, come and get engaged with the community center that they're trying to build. If you want to know more about that, talk to Teresa or Frankie Goss. I think that's really exciting about our Penn Valley. And it's going to take a, it's going to take the whole village to get it built and. Again, I'm still looking for a couple of folks to replace people here on this MAC. I, I would love to find somebody in rough and ready areas. So somebody if could reach out to somebody that they might know that would be interested in coming in participated, that would be great. And Ryan doing a great job. Glad to have you on board and all of you. Thank you for volunteering your time. And I'd like to say, this is the other thing about this, exciting, the South County MAC is meeting. I think their meeting is coming up. It might have been tonight. Or no, maybe it's next week. So they're real excited because the Higgins Marketplace is going to be. You know, as they start to develop down there, they're going to get to utilize what we're doing here and I know. Supervisor Schofield's really happy about that. So thank you all for putting in the time to make this, this MAC really work. And be beneficial for me as a supervisor to bring the needs and ideas from our area. So thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Hook. We will move on to item number seven, which is general announcements. Does anybody have anything for the general announcements? I heard an ID. Oh, that was Teresa.
I know, I'm the verbose one. Anyway, so I just wanted to let everybody know that. The Penn Valley Community Rodeo Association is planning on having its fall fest. Probably the first or second weekend of October. And we're looking at having, you know, the pumpkin patch and all the stuff we normally do. And also probably some mutton busting and maybe some wild west buckers, but we're actually going to have a really fun, fun. Penn Valley event coming up in October as long as the county stays in the right tier on the COVID. So I just want everybody to know and look forward to seeing you all there with your shops on and all that.
Is that the rodeo? Are we having the rodeo?
At the moment, we're looking at doing our, just our regular fall fest. We are having Jim Canas starting in June. We're having ropings there starting in June. We're going to be having some mutton busting clinics for the kids so they can learn how to hang on to a sheep that's running really fast. Yeah, that's so much fun, so much fun to see the kids do that. And then we are looking at maybe having a one day bulls only rodeo. So we do have some different events that we're looking at right now and we're just checking to see what we can do. And you know, that's a, the fire department owns the rodeo grounds, so whatever we do, it has to be compliant with the rules a hundred percent. So not to mention we're law abiding rodeo folk anyways. Right, Sue?
Rob, the answer to your question is no, there will not be a Penn Valley rodeo as we're all used to having it. This, this year for multiple reasons, but. The, the third weekend in May is, is available for you to go on a vacation if you want.
I think I'm going to Boise, Idaho, actually.
Make sure you get a round trip ticket.
Go visit the grandkids in Boise.
Um, I think I will announce, just because I see it going on in the chat and it has been top of mind. I was in the Holiday Center the other day. And I saw, I went to the pharmacy and I looked over and I saw that the new library is, they're open, they're up and running. In the old, all the best video, for those of us who remember video stores. Back, back corner there. So it looks like they've got quite a bit more space in there, I would imagine. I gotta make it point to go in there and check it out, but, but the library is, is moved and they, they are inviting people in, so I thought I'd mention that.
It is, it is awesome. I just say, I gotta say, I can't say enough about the library. And, and there is a new meeting space in there that's probably at some point will be able, you could use that meeting space. Again, internet's hooked up there already. And then check out, it's so cool. I, I don't have my phone here, I'd show you, but there's new app. You can do the library app on your phone now and check out your books through your app. Or look and see what's available. So the library is really rocking some fun stuff and I would just encourage anybody to go buy. We have a full time librarian there. Now, and. Yeah, I, I just am, I'm tickled. I can't, I, I wouldn't. You know, when we started it, I didn't have the vision they did and when you walk in and you see. How it makes you feel inside there is great. There's an outside deck to sit on. There's, yeah, you're going to love it. You're going to love it.
Can I mention one thing also? I was in there yesterday and as a former library director warmed my heart. To see a brand. And the children's room is awesome. So the building actually has two. Good sized rooms and one room is just for kids. That's a really nice area. So hopefully the kids in the area could use it. So it's a great facility.
Hey Doug, what about the bridge and the wildflowers? What's going on down at Bridgeport?
Oh my gosh, well, wildflowers have been in bloom really early this year. They started really early. They're actually kind of fading. Now, because of the weather, but I don't know if you've seen, but there has been. I don't know, three or four big articles in the Union over the last few weeks about, about the Butter Milk Ben Trail. Oh my gosh, when you go down there now, there's tons of people, even on the weekdays. So those articles have really generated a lot of interest. So there's a lot of people out on the trail. The bridge is really taking shape. I mean, it's really, the bottom structure's done. All the side bracing is done. Most of the major support beams on the roof are done. And the next thing that'll be going up is, and they've got the, the structures built. Underneath the bridge that holds the arch. You know, that bridge has that arch that goes up in the middle of it, gives it that distinctive look. So I would think in the next month or so, they'll start constructing that arch and putting that arch up. And, and then they test the weight and then they drop it onto the foundation. And take that ugly metal structure out and then they do all the finish work. But I would think by late summer, early fall, we'll be walking across the bridge.
Are we going to be having ghost stories there again soon?
I'm, I'm not sure what the park service is doing, actually. You know, it's, it's the park service is state. And so they're very strict on the COVID guidelines. So the visitor centers aren't open yet. But I think soon, soon they'll start opening those things up. I hope.
That's exciting.
A big celebration down there later this year. Great.
Rob?
Yeah. Let's go wet blanket out there, but what happened to the Irish bar that was going to be where the library was? Couple of years ago, I thought that would have been fun myself. Somebody wanted to put an Irish bar.
Oh, we do, we do have the Bullgast Brewery opened, if you like. So that, that is open and running back there behind Player's Pizza. That's probably one of our newest businesses that opened.
Yeah, I can't do beer, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not real positive. It's my understanding they're going to do some inspection is. Expansion into the building where the library was, maybe for the restaurant, but I, I'm not positive on that.
Well, I think it's great. We got a library. I really do. That's neat.
Okay, anybody else got any other announcements?
I just wanted to say something really quickly. Sharon had a question earlier that she was seeking information on. It was something that the building department could answer and I'm going to research it for her, but I'm wondering how, how can I get in touch with you, Sharon?
You can call me at. Five three zero four three two one one two two. That's my work number.
Okay, great. I'll do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Then barring any other announcements. We will move on to item number eight, which is just announcing the next Penn Valley MAC meeting will be May fifteenth. The third Thursday of next month. At six PM via Zoom. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And with the second, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.